So I would like to call to the meeting to order our Board of Education regular meeting and public hearing regarding our working cash fund bonds for this evening at 6:02 PM. Thank you very much. If we could start with a roll call, please?
Colleen Klimsack.
Present.
Claudia Parker.
Yes.
Kimberly Leonard. Yes. Judith Thresher.
Yes.
Rachel Mierquin.
Yes.
Michael O'Millar.
Present.
Denise Jones. Yes.
All is present. Thank you very much. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So my board and I'm guessing everybody's present has the most updated agenda in front of them. Hot off the presses. Thank you, Sonia. If I could, if we take a moment to look at it, but if we could have somebody to please make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the first motion to approve the agenda.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, so either Michael or Rachel.
Oh, I didn't hear.
Alright, so Kimberly Leonard. Yes. Rachel?
Yes.
Mierquin, sorry. Yes. Michael O'Millar?
Yes.
Denise Jones?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Judith Thresher?
Yes.
Colleen Klimsack?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
I will turn over to our superintendent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So the first thing on Superintendent Reports tonight is somebody you should know. So the first person that I would like to acknowledge this month is John Boyton. He is absolutely somebody you should know. Each and every day, John greets all employees with a welcoming smile. He has gone above and beyond to ensure that all staff members have the equipment they need to be successful in their jobs. He is always focused on customer service and satisfaction. So much so, he goes out of his way with small details as well as in the individual touch for each employee. John always ensures that board packets are delivered in a timely manner, fixed individual desks for employees when requested, and recently, we even received a compliment from a visitor on how clean our windows look. This effort contributes to the overall workplace and satisfaction of each and every employee. I just want to say, John, you've made my new start here absolutely essential, so thank you for going the extra mile. John Boyton is absolutely somebody you should know. Take a picture and you can receive, he's all snazzy, dressed up.
Thank you so much. The angel who drops off the board packets at our doors.
That is great.
Thank you. Now I know. I'll try to meet you at the door next time. Oh, no, we gotta front center.
Yeah, get in the middle.
Thank you so much.
Alright, ready? One, two, three. Congratulations.
Okay. Next participant for somebody you should know is Colleen Kempton. Colleen is a special education teacher and she's also currently working in our summer school program. Claudio Martinez actually recommended her and we have a quick video to show of Colleen's services.
Sorry, it's not working for the people watching at home. They have no sound.
Oh.
So I'm just gonna fix it real quick and then I'll restart.
Thanks, Alex. We want to make sure everyone at home gets to hear about Colleen.
You're gonna hear it a couple times, Cal.
You Should Know segment. This past year, I was tasked with helping coordinate our extended school year program for our middle school students. When I asked Kathleen Prado and Jen Daly, the principal and assistant principal of Central Middle School, who among all their staff knew their students best, they both immediately said Colleen Kempton. I specifically needed to create classrooms for our students, manage rosters, and determine what supports individual students needed. Colleen was familiar with all of this. Colleen took time out of her schedule to meet with me and share ideas and supports that each of our students needed to be successful in the extended school year program. Now that the program has started, I've been able to see Colleen's teaching in action. Whenever you enter her classroom, all of her students are engaged in the learning process. The content of her lessons are always rigorous, yet fun and immersive for the students as well. The students have been overjoyed to read the book Holes this summer and are ending their extended school year program by now watching the movie Holes and doing a compare and contrast activity between the book and the film. They're very excited for it. I can speak on and on about Colleen and her amazing teaching, but I thought it'd be more engaging for all of you to have some of her students share why Colleen is definitely someone you should know.
So Ms. Kempton is nice, kind, caring. And the first day, she gave me a nice warm welcome. And like when we got to the math and stuff, um, she was the best sixth grade summer school teacher I ever had. Thank you, Ms. Kempton.
I thank Ms. Kempton for helping others and help us for math and she's the best teacher we ever have and help us with reading. Thank you, Ms. Kempton.
What makes my teacher a better person is because she's a very nice person. She would help any student. And on the first day of school, she was, um, she gave us all snacks and we did our fun activities.
That Ms. Kempton helps a lot of people that that's really hard for us to do. And she helps us with math, with like really hard math problems. And thank you, Ms. Kempton.
So okay, so there are some things I like about Ms. Kempton. First of all, she's nice. Sometimes she lets us skip work. She lets us go outside and play with the ball or something. And, um, she lets us read in class. So, um, yeah, thank you, Ms. Kempton.
Why I think Ms. Kempton is the best teacher is because she's kind. She always helps other, helps out me and she gets how I, how I can relate to things. And she is, and she has fun. She does fun things with us and it makes me, makes all of us, me happy. And she, when we go outside, she always, um, lets us do, play with my ball. And we use it to play monkey in the middle. And yeah, thank you, Ms. Kempton.
Oh, that is so sweet.
Congratulations, Ms. Kempton. You can come on up and receive your award and we will take your picture.
You know, when those boys are willing to talk about, you know, that says so much.
Wow.
How sweet.
She lets us read. And you feed them.
They even, I mean, they skip work.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and they skip work. That's so sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Colleen. Thank you.
I'll send you the video in case you couldn't hear it. It was crazy.
Thank you.
Uh, congratulations. That could not have been sweeter from those kids. Oh my gosh.
Middle schoolers?
Middle schoolers, yes.
And they were courted. That is something.
Next, we have an update from Mr. Caesar Salazar concerning our back to school bash.
Excellent.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Woodland. My name's Caesar Salazar, Vice President of District 124 Foundation. On behalf of our President Linda Poneko and the Foundation Board, we thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am so excited to share some of the Foundation's plans for this school year. To start off, we will be having our back to school bash. It is something we missed last year. It is a great thing and it's good to get you back into planning the stages and finally see families coming together. Safely, right? That's the most important thing now, safely. But we're finally getting together. Our back to school bash is going to be on Tuesday, August 24th from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, which is the first full day of school. So how fun to have everyone come out that same night and enjoy the bash. And there's a lot of fun activities that we have discussed. And I'm pretty sure all the students and families will have fun. Please watch our Facebook and our page on the district's website for more information in the upcoming weeks. We are also creating a new website for the Foundation that should be up in the next couple of weeks as well. Very updated and linked with all the schools together. The Foundation is asking the administrators, teachers, parents in our community for help and make this safe and successful event for everyone to enjoy and continue throughout the coming years to come for schools. We will be, we will be pushing to have volunteers sign up and help throughout the event. We are going to be knocking on business doors for sponsorships and donations. We will also be connecting items donated at the back to school bash. For every item you bring, you will earn a free raffle ticket and get a chance to win those beautiful prizes that are in place. The Foundation will also be selling lawn signs. The signs will be $10 again this year. We have a new theme this year, which we won't unveil later on. Lawn signs will be available for purchasing during registration. We are also excited to announce along the lawn signs, tickets for Split the Pot at the back to school bash. Tickets will go on sale starting at registration and will also be available at packet pickup. All booster boards will be selling the tickets at packet pickup and we will continue to sell at the bash as well so we can get as many people to help support. We will announce during the weeks what the pot has grown to and continue to update on social media platforms available to us. The Foundation will start the Split the Pot at $100. Let's help grow this pot for one lucky family at the bash. This coming year, the Foundation will be teaming up with Dr. Vida Newman to help provide donations to the EP Food Pantry and help our community members. Southwest Garden Club will be joining in this effort by donating fresh produce from their garden as well. In the fall, each school will have a theme for a month and what donations we are seeking. More information will come out when school starts. We will post what items we are collecting when it gets closer to the days. We all have seen hard times in this past year in the community with job loss, hours cut, and keeping our families safe. The Foundation wants to do everything in their power to help our students, family, and especially our communities. Another, another exciting announcement is that the Foundation will be having breakfast with the Grinch in December. More details to follow as it gets closer to the event. But yes, we are very excited that the Grinch is coming back.
That was a very fun day. That was. That's great.
The Foundation understands that while we are very excited to making these plans, we have to follow anything changed, altered due to COVID guidelines. And we are prepared and we're on top of that. Lastly, the District 124 Foundation has an opening for a new board member. There will be an application posted online and we look forward to having another community member join the family. Thank you again all for the support you have given the Foundation and we are very excited for this year coming. Thank you.
One question.
Yes.
Do you know what the previous Split the Pot pool was?
Not off the top of my head, but I can find out for you.
I think it would be interesting for the community to know and then we could challenge everybody to make it go high.
That's, that's very well noted. Yes, I will make a note of that and bring it along to the board members and we can, we can accomplish that goal.
Healthy competition. Right. I like it.
I see you and I raise you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have never been to back to school bash, obviously.
Very.
So I cannot wait to attend as I continue to learn about all the fun activities.
It has slowly grown. I mean, it was started a few years ago and with the Foundation and it's really a great night for the kids and the families.
Yes, sounds wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Part of this too, though, is the possible Board of Education donation.
Correct.
So do we want to discuss that now too?
Yep.
Took over your superintendent.
No, go for it.
Um, so there was a Foundation meeting just today. And one thing that came up is the Foundation is asking for donations from each of the booster clubs. From, I believe there was a volunteering of the principals. So the point is there's all sorts of baskets for raffle prizes coming up. And the board was also asked, was asked for a donation as well of a raffle basket. There was a specific kind of basket they wanted. We need to find out from perhaps Eric or Dr. Woodland if it is okay if we were to purchase a Benny's gift card from the board. And I know, and Yeti coolers was the very specific.
We decided on it.
A Jewel gift card. And you could do with it what you want. Okay, fair enough. Um, so the, they're asking the booster clubs for $100 baskets, whatever they're donating. What do we feel comfortable with, I guess, is the question?
I feel like $100 is what we used to do for the health fair. Remember, we gave $100 memberships for both a boy and a girl membership, you know, like a male, female or whatever type thing. I feel like a $100 gift card for Jewel with like some Yeti cups or whatever they, I don't know. That seems kind of simple, about the $100 range. And then the rest of ours will be different gift baskets for, um, we will, we were thinking, um,
Oh, graduation ticket.
Graduation. That's a two graduation ticket.
Thank you. Two, two and two, perhaps.
Yes, three sets of two tickets for graduation.
We would call those in-kind donations or, or, um, so not necessarily a monetary amount, but, uh,
So something that the high school has, has started and we could certainly maybe entertain that. And that was to get more of their, like, excitement for the graduation is that any parent at the junior high can, can buy the tickets for those tickets. So if I have a seventh grader, but I want to buy tickets this year, then they're good for me for that, the child's graduation.
That's a bigger pool of people.
It is. It opens up for the whole. And that's what the high school did and I kind of liked that idea when they said it because now sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I don't think we should go down from K to five. I don't think so. I think though junior high, knowing if I'm a sixth grade parent, I got three years to put in to get two and extra tickets. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I thought that was kind of a cute idea. I think that's a doable. We're not giving away 50 different tickets.
Right. No, I think that's a great idea.
Six tickets and, you know, whatever.
Again, having a bigger pool.
So do you think that would be something that we could manage too at, like at the district office, they'd be able to manage that?
Yep.
Some type of certificate that they could turn into you a year or two if they were.
They could keep in the vault until that, because that is.
Yeah, right. Then it's actually come out. Yeah, we'd keep their name on it.
Yeah. Is there another? I just want to insert also that in the past, anytime we've ever approached Meyer to give us donations or anything, they have every single time said yes to us. So if we're gonna be purchasing gift cards, let's not leave them out.
Oh, they're already on our list. Yeah.
Yeah. But have it be a Meyer card.
Oh, yeah. Be a Meyer card. Yeah, great. Yeah, keep it in Evergreen. You're right.
That is a great idea.
That's a great idea.
I love that.
Because they're lovely at Meyer and Meyer Annals. Our businesses are wonderful to us.
They have, they have done a lot for the Foundation for our education, our adult, the, uh, the community education programs. They have really, that's a really.
They say yes all the time. So awesome. Alright, so. Um, and I would just say maybe one more other gift basket because you know, I always love good gift baskets, like those things. Um, we would give, we would raffle off, um, a yearbook maybe. They're only $15 at most at our school. So we could also, that's something.
Whoever that is, um, you know.
We can do five for one for each building. You know, we raffle off as.
We could do a booster membership. Now I'm just getting, you know, dollar signs in my eyes, right? Like a family membership.
These are small, tangible things that we can help as a school board to, you know, like, you know, again, the, the yearbook is a $15 or $20 investment and I wish I could order them. I ordered them last year, but, you know.
Really good idea though. So is that a basket itself? Like, do we come up with other things or is that just the?
You can try for some swag in it from this district office or something. Just a little swag bag with, you'll get a.
Alright, so what I'm hearing is, um, so we said, uh, graduation tickets?
Yep.
Okay, I love that. And it's not, uh, there's no expiration date, so not year specific. Okay, I love that idea. So we said a gift basket with Meyer represented and maybe some Go mugs and things like that for the approximately $100. Such a good idea. And we had, um, a yearbook from each of the five buildings?
Yes, five different yearbooks.
Do we like the booster membership idea? Like for each of the buildings? We could tack that on there?
Yeah, booster membership.
I'm just spending money like I'm crazy.
Yeah, that's a cute idea. No, I agree. If they have it on. A $10 membership fee. It's a $10, you know, we're talking.
Right. Yeah, those are, those are, but there's five of them. So that's kind of nice. It is. And when parents participate, sometimes that gets them in the door without being charged to donate to dads and all that stuff, so.
Yep.
What could go wrong if there's donuts? Okay, so grad tickets, not year specific, um, the $100 basket as requested. And then five, one for each building, the yearbook, booster, and maybe swag.
That would be great.
Very cool. Is Linda still, Caesar's still here?
Okay, so. Yeah.
Um, but we can communicate that back with.
With Anna and Caesar. You guys heard it from us.
Yes. Oh, good thinking, guys. That was great. I'm very excited for that.
And tonight is an action to shut the item.
It is. We will be voting on that now that we have stated that, so it will be, uh,
So it's gonna be official.
Yes, it'll be all official.
That you're making a donation.
In the next hour or so. So there you go. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. The next is concerning our 21, 22 school year updates. So I wanted to briefly talk about how the Illinois State Board of Education has adopted a resolution that requires all students to return to in-person learning. So this first and foremost is absolutely a celebration. To think that some students have not come into our buildings for close to 18 months absolutely resonates with me and I know for a fact that it resonates with each and every one of you. They offered in-person learning in Evergreen Park the entire school year. And due to the pandemic, some students were just not able to return for a variety of reasons. This was done with the dedication of staff, community, the Board of Education, students, all coming together, together rooted in a decision about what's best for kids. As we continue to progress into the 21, 22 school year, I am reminded by a colleague of mine that I know in Evergreen Park that says, there's more that connects us here that divides us. And I want to continue to be reminded of all the things that bring us together that we are able to rally around. As we continue to work through mitigation for the upcoming school year, I'm asking for perseverance of everyone that we've worked together to push through, to make two, to make decisions on critical factors. Keeping kids in school that are safe at all times and providing students the opportunity to stay in school, which includes the avoidance of a mandated quarantine. As of today, we've yet to finalize any decisions in regards to mitigation strategies for the upcoming school year. However, we absolutely are having deep conversations concerning what is best for the return to full in-person learning. And that includes full capacity. So as we continue to look toward the opening of schools in August, we will continue to review mitigation as a whole and not as isolated factors so that we ensure that if we're taking any mitigation away, that we're doing so in an appropriate manner to allow us to continue to really flourish and again, keep kids safe and keep kids in school. So that's where we're currently at in regards to our updates for the 21, 22 school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Persevere.
I think it's been really helpful with all the communication that you've been putting out.
Thank you.
Letting the parents and the community members know where we stand and that it's, it's an ongoing conversation.
Process, ongoing conversation. Next topic is much more exciting, right? So I recently was granted the opportunity to have an administrative retreat and I, I had to include this photo and because Mr. O'Malley, the superintendent at Evergreen Park, he actually took this photo for us.
Nice.
Awesome. So I want to first thank the Evergreen Park High School because they offer their beautiful facilities, their remodeled library.
Isn't it gorgeous?
Oh my gosh. Absolutely beautiful. And it really allowed us an environment to really collaborate with one another, learn a little bit more about each other as a team as we continue to grow together in unity. And we were graciously offered the opportunity to have lunch with the high school that day as well and really connect with them so we can continue to look at education as a continuum of services in our Evergreen Park community. Some of the main topics that we really talked about was this concept of trust and how we really have to trust each other as a team, trust our teachers, trust our community. We extensively talked about communication and how important communication is. And we looked deeply at our Five Essentials survey, which Alex will report out on tonight. And the concept of it, again, including teacher voice and the decision-making process and making sure that we can continue to communicate, communicate with all stakeholders. And then we just, we had some fun. Of course, Alex planned some fabulous games, which included Family Feud and Wheel of Fortune during our lunch games. And then we ended the retreat really talking about some of our core commitments. So recently, last school year, interim superintendents, they put together a committee and that committee was really focused on the teacher evaluation process. And we started to really dig deep into what the teacher evaluation process will look like and that training that we'll conduct the first institute day. So I have to say, first and foremost, I asked this team to come in July on a Thursday and Friday and they all showed up.
That is dedicated.
They are absolutely dedicated to what's best for kids and what's best for our staff. So I have to say thank you to each of them. They're an absolutely fabulous team and I, I know I cannot serve the district without their support.
Excellent. I'm so glad you got to do that. Now, so early.
Yes.
I mean, there's so many things to think about, but to have it outside of the school year and things like that, so to those who showed up, but also I'm really glad you had that time together.
And I love that they all got to see, I mean, I'm sure not all of them have been to Evergreen Park High School. Our kids transitioned, transitioned into a beautiful school, great climate, culture. There, it's just, they've done amazing things there over the years.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Well, thank you for sharing. Excellent. Yes. I'm smiling.
So next we have Alex. Alex has done a fantastic job, Mr. Thresher, putting together some essential data that we reviewed as an administrative team concerning our Five Essentials results. So he's just gonna highlight a couple positives and a couple areas of growth that we again talked about as an administrative team. So take it over, Alex.
Alright, thanks for the great introduction. That's what I was gonna say. This is just a brief overview of what the Five Essentials is. So the five categories that they're really looking at. And I guess to back up, so the survey is taken by students in grades four through eight in our district. And I guess to back up, so the survey is taken by students in grades four through eight in our district, teachers and parents. And the five areas they're looking at, as you see up here, are effective leadership, collaborative teachers, involved families, supportive environments, and ambitious instruction. And so our students, teachers, and parents took the survey last year from February to April. So that timeframe, keep in mind what was going on at that time, uh, but just to give you a frame of reference. And then this next slide is just showing you our participation rates. Uh, and then keep in mind for the student rate, they only start in fourth grade, so. Um, more heavily on Central, but in talking to Dr. Woodland, it seemed, we came to the conclusion that, you know, even those middle school kids taking the survey, they're probably reflecting on their whole career, so while they're the only ones taking it, they're really speaking for what the process is like all throughout their tenure in the district. So moving on, so we pulled out a positive from each school, so when we did this at our admin retreat, we talked about the positive, and then the principals shared with each other, like, why they thought that came about, and it led to some great conversations and idea sharing, and hopefully, um, their fellow principals could take that back to their buildings. So just to go through some of these, at Northeast, ninety-one percent of teachers said their students regularly provide constructive feedback. So that was a number that stood out higher than at some of the other schools, so. Carrie then discussed that with the rest of the group, and they shared some ideas, and hopefully, that'll help the other buildings improve. I'll just keep going through. Ninety-four percent of teachers at Northwest said they're eager to try new ideas, so that's great to see the innovation happening at Northwest. At Southeast, ninety-seven percent of teachers say they're really trying to improve their teaching, which was awesome to see. At Southwest, ninety-six percent of teachers said there's a conscious effort made to make new teachers feel welcome. So that was one of the, our highest scores on the, on the whole Five Essentials was, uh, teacher, like, social, socialization and teachers making teachers feel welcome, so that was great to see. And then at Central, ninety-two percent of teachers report that the teachers trust each other, so we saw a lot of trust between teachers and teachers, which was really exciting to see. Any questions on those positives before I move on? Okay, so this is parents, so positive responses from parents, uh, which I was really impressed with our scores here. So ninety-four, seven percent of parents said they would recommend our schools, ninety-five percent said we make them aware of important information, ninety-one percent are satisfied with the education, ninety-five percent say their child feels safe at school.
And that went up, that actually, that number actually went up overall from the year before, which is funny, cause it's a pandemic year, that, amazing, that's amazing.
And it wasn't a bad number to begin.
No, it wasn't bad, but it went up, it didn't stay, stay, you know, like, you know, you gotta think these, even if they stayed at home, they still then felt safe to stay at home, so.
Yeah.
You know.
The parents were definitely appreciative of the efforts we made last year. And then this is looking at areas, these were answers from teachers and students, our highest performing areas, and the, so the left side is highest performing, and the right side is where we made up the most ground from the previous year. Should I move on to areas of growth? Alright, room for growth. Okay, so in the, in the, uh, category of quality professional development, uh, these were two areas we were gonna focus on. Teachers wanting more professional development that's more focused on longer term, and having more opportunities to work productively with their colleagues.
I think that speaks to, like, last year, there was a lot of short-term goals on how to keep kids safe, I mean, as we were in a pandemic, so certainly, I could see where the professional development wasn't narrowly as strong versus how to teach guidelines and ISB's new, you know, mitigation, and then report that they have opportunities to work productively, like, you couldn't even go into a classroom for fifteen, you know, there was no. So it doesn't surprise, I, yeah, I feel like that's probably very true.
I really appreciate that they're looking forward.
Yeah.
They're, they're looking ahead and saying, this is what we would like to.
Like to improve on, right, yeah, yes.
Which, what you're saying, the same thing came up at our retreat and led to a lot of great conversations about how we could build off of last year and look more long-term.
Yeah.
Alex, one question I have that's related to that second bullet point, cause I noticed that the, um, that the percentage hasn't changed significantly for the teacher response on opportunities to work productively.
Like, from year to year?
Yeah, I was just curious, um, how those Wednesday late start mornings are scheduled such that that's not viewed as, cause I thought, I always thought that was the purpose of the late start, to have time to collaborate. So I was just curious if that was structured in such a way that, um, that teachers weren't putting together with each other.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So the concept of late starts has always been in place, but how do we then create the sustained professional learning plan that's aligned to our commitments as an organization, that all five buildings really have the opportunity to engage in? So we really talked about structuring late starts in terms of providing those opportunities for teachers, and then allowing teachers to then give us feedback on the structure of late starts as well. The number one thing that impacts learning with teachers is them having the opportunity to talk to one another. So really capitalizing on that and making sure that we're providing a targeted focus, I think will absolutely make an impact long-term. It's a great question. We talked about late starts extensively. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
And I think it's gonna really benefit us that Dr. Woodland oversaw professional development at her prior district.
It might be one of my favorite things ever.
Okay, so on to the next slide was reflective dialogue. Um, so thirty-two percent of teachers said, um, they've had conversations with colleagues about the goals of the school less than once a month. So the principals and everyone there kinda talked about how we could create more opportunities for those conversations to happen. Okay, the next category was collaborative practices. Uh, so sixty-one percent of teachers said, um, they never had the opportunity to observe another teacher's classrooms, and some of that goes back to, like, the, well, one COVID, and then just like the planning and team building opportunities that they had in their days, so we talked about some possible strategies moving forward.
We kind of get a blank slate. We don't, because there's obviously structure in place, but we really can start to reimagine things, how we can do things different. You know, this is a whole new ballgame.
Yeah.
Which is really exciting, overwhelming, I'm sure, I'm sorry. I know there's a lot of work to do, but exciting, that's, uh, that's great.
Well, I was gonna speak to this a little bit at the end, but it kinda relates, so essentially, our teachers love each other, right? Isn't that great?
Yes.
Like, perfect world, perfect way for us to capitalize, but how do we then create lines of trust between our teachers to then say, it's okay to enter my classroom? So it's a really personal connection, and you have to be able to break down those barriers in order to get there, so. Makes sense.
Is it also like a logistical concern with, like, the demand for subs? I'm sure that's probably, there aren't that many opportunities.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, and the last one was teacher influence, so sixty-eight percent of teachers, uh, reported having little or no influence on establishing the curriculum and the instructional program. So again, we revisited that, and, uh, Dr. Ashley Carlson was very involved with discussing some of her ideas and Dr. Woodland as well, and I think it led to a lot of good conversations. Alright. I do, I just wanted to say too that, so myself and Eric were the two non-educators in the room, and it was like, very interesting to sit back and listen to the principals, assistant principals, and other administrators just share all these great ideas there. I don't know, some of them seem like common sense, some of them seem like, just like, it's gonna take our district to the next level if we're able to do some of these things that came up in the room, and I feel like we have the people here who are gonna do that and make sure we're providing a quality education for our kids.
That's great, thank you so much. We'll be singing this later.
So, yeah, so the next steps were just, we have those numbers, we've been, we check them from year to year. Uh, so we have those as milestones, looking at where we're at right now, and we could revisit them, and as the building principals determine kind of their strategies and see where they go in years to come. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
And a non-education person in the room, you sound like an education person, I, I think.
I just copy the things that I do.
Play one well on TV, how about that? You're doing, uh, that was great, and it was really, really helpful, and, uh, I look forward to seeing how, how else we can use the data as. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Right. We have our report from Dr. Ashley Carlson. She's gonna report on our school-wide waivers.
It's great to see you all.
So great.
Uh, so I hit the ground running, uh, first of July with the title grant, um, so that is kind of what I've been working on. One of the things that goes along with the title grant, um, is whether we are a school-wide program versus a targeted program. School-wide would be that we have the flexibility to use our title funds for all of our programs, uh, across our buildings, and it doesn't have to be targeted to specific things. Um, in two thousand seventeen, possibly not you all, but the board approved, um, school-wide plans for four of our buildings, those were Northeast, Southeast, Northwest, and Central. In order to have a school-wide program, you have to have forty percent low income within that building, uh, and that has not been a problem thus far. However, in last year's numbers, we dipped below that at Northwest and Central, um, which is then requiring us to do a waiver, to apply for a waiver, so we can continue that school-wide programming that we've been offering since two thousand seventeen. Uh, so tonight, we're here with those waivers for you to approve, uh, so that we can get those filed for a title grant.
Just to, so, uh, probably, one possibility as to why that happened, since our population didn't necessarily change, is the way that that is determined is by number of families that sign up for low and free lunches, right? Which everybody received free lunches this year, so, um, it's not necessarily that our demographics has changed so greatly, it was that, um, we weren't, they weren't, the behaviors have changed, and so, um, thank you in your first twenty-one days.
I gave Ashley a test, and she completed it.
So I wanted to just explain why that would have changed, uh, to anybody who's listening, uh, at home, so, uh, thank you. Thank you for catching up with that, so, and that is, uh, on our content agenda for later as well.
It is, yeah.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
Eric, for our time for us.
I like it, power time, yes.
So on Monday, June twenty-eighth, we received a FOIA request from Mrs. Bernadette Soto from the Chicago Regional Council of Carpenters, that request has been. Looking at the revenues as of June thirty, twenty-twenty-one, you'll notice that we've received more money than we were budgeted for the fiscal year, by about one point eight million dollars. The number is an unaudited final number, but it's still a positive sign that it appears revenues received exceeded the budgeted figures. The education fund received about a million dollars more in revenues than budgeted, so it's, you know.
Can you say that louder?
The education fund received about a million dollars more in revenues than.
Great, like that.
So here's expenditures as of June thirty, twenty-twenty-one. Just like the revenues, we spent about eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars more this fiscal year than we budgeted. We just received the first draft of the end of the fiscal year financial statements, and it appears that total revenues will have exceeded total expenditures by just over a million dollars. This compares to the district's budget, which projected total revenues to exceed total expenditures by roughly only four thousand dollars, so, it's a very good year.
Is that because we got, uh, more of our tax, uh, tax money in, or?
I would have to give you more information with that, but it would be with, like, the one-time grants.
Gotcha, okay, nice. Good question, how can we do that again, right?
I will, I will be reviewing the financials more closely, and I'll be providing more information when I present the tentative budget next week, I mean, next month.
This is, you know, end of year was, again, twenty-one days ago, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So now we have Tammy, Tammy Shamo here from PMA to answer anyone's questions and discuss the working cash bond.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, I'm fast again. So if you remember, we reviewed the high-level timeline last month, we talked about doing two things tonight, as it relates to the sale of the working cash bonds. One is to hold a public hearing, which by statute you're required to do, and I know that's coming up on the agenda in a few minutes. And, uh, the other item is approval of an underwriter slash placement agent for the sale of the bonds, when you have a written recommendation. Uh, and I'm happy to entertain any questions about that recommendation, but just to give you a couple high-level bullet points about that process, we sent a request for proposals to several firms, they submitted proposals by the deadline, we analyzed them, not only in terms of who would give you the lowest fee, because that, of course, is very important, but really more importantly, which firm is gonna do the best work in terms of getting you the lowest interest rate in the market, because that is the single greatest determinant factor of what your cost to borrow is going to be.
Right.
So going through that, that quantitative analysis and looking through those proposals in great detail, it also worked out that the firm we have a lot of confidence in is the firm that gave you the lowest fee proposal. It's nice when that happens, cause that doesn't always happen. Um, so our recommendation, as you saw in there, was to go with Piper Sandler. Um, there's one update, uh, since that memo came to you, because you'll notice that that was dated last week, the thirteenth, and since then, we've been doing a lot of work, having a lot of conversations with Piper Sandler about the best way to sell your bonds. And I mentioned in the, uh, write-up that we were leaning more toward a placement, which means we were trying to find a local bank. And we did get some feedback to tell us, there were some banks that just weren't interested, for whatever reason, not a reflection on the district negatively, it's just that they either don't have the liquidity at this point, or it just doesn't meet their needs as a financial institution. Um, and then a couple banks gave us, we call it indicative rates, so it's not a promise of a rate at this point, but a general idea. And the rates they gave us, in our opinion, are just not competitive enough, given where the general market is, and how low rates are in that, that universe, uh, out there in the municipal bond market, so. We are going to switch gears at this time, um, and, and proceed with that negotiated sale, which means Piper Sandler would serve as underwriter instead of a placement agent, but we have the flexibility if something changes again in the next several weeks, which I don't think it would, to go back then being a placement agent, but you're hiring them for either role, uh, which we appreciate, because again, we can just keep moving forward and honor the timeline that you've seen before, so we can get your bonds sold by the end of August, and have your proceeds by the middle of December. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, I know we have some new folks, so this is all brand new to you, but, um, happy to backstep if that's helpful anyway, as well.
Yeah, my, my question would be, is there, are we paying more for the role reversal to go from the placement to the underwriter, for them to be in that interim state? Are we paying a per diem, if you will?
Not a per diem, but it's a good question in that typically the fees for a firm to serve as a placement agent are lower than if they're an underwriter.
Correct.
So in general, all of your costs of issuance will be less with a placement, but when the banks gave us their indicative rates, they're too high, when we go back to the underwriting opportunity for a negotiated sale, with the rates we know we can get in the market being lower, plus the cost of issuance, even though they're a little higher, the all-in rate looks like it would be lower by going with an underwriting, so that's what we have to keep trying to balance. So, um, I, I do think this is the right, the right approach at this time. The market is still so strong, I probably am beating a dead horse every time I'm here saying this market is so hot, that continues to be the case. Rates have actually continued to drop a little bit since I was here last month.
So to clarify, you're saying, yes, you are paying more, but it serves you to do so, because you don't wanna overpay for the, the bonds.
Right, we care more about the all-in rate you're gonna pay, the market rate plus your costs, and that, based on our analysis, we believe it's the underwriter, even though you're gonna pay them more, at the end of the day, that's gonna serve you better in the long run in terms of your total borrowing cost will be lower.
So, forgive me for being new and not having. I just have some general questions, and if you wanna explain it to me like I'm five, that would be really helpful. Essentially, we aren't going to be collateralizing that or?
You're not collateralizing it. So you have the ability under statute in Illinois. A school district needs to borrow money. It has to issue bonds. You can't just go to a bank, take out a loan, have collateral on a loan. You have to sell a municipal bond. Okay? So investors will come to the school district ultimately and say, I'm willing to loan you this money for this term at a certain interest rate. And then you have to statutorily pay that back over the life of the bonds.
So then my next few questions would probably require us to have actually like secured the portion of sale, because I'm just curious about timeline, like how long does it take to pay it back? Like what does that equal to the district in terms of like financial obligations year to year? Just those kind of like basic questions.
Sure. So we gave the board an update last month. We have to, first of all, there's a concept called a debt service extension base, which goes back to statute and it limits the amount of annual debt service payments, principal and interest, the district can have for non-referent debt. Working cash bonds are a type of non-referent debt. Okay? That annual limit right now is about $1.43 million. Okay? So the district has some other bonds outstanding that we paid off in fiscal year 25. So with this new debt, we have to work around the debt that you have and then make sure in any single year that annual payment's not going to be more than $1.43 million. So we put it all together based on the update from last month, which built in some cushion into the market assumptions. We would need to take it out to fiscal year 2030. Okay? So you're looking at roughly a nine-year payback for these bonds. Everything together, living within that maximum payment of $1.430. And the estimated total debt service cost to borrow the $6 million last month was just over $6.6 million. So your interest cost, everything together would be approximately $600,000 based on that structure. We won't have the final amount until we actually get into the market. Does that help?
It is very helpful. And then again, since nothing is actually sold yet, it might be difficult to answer this question. But what does that equate to in terms of like what we would need to increase from property taxes?
Well, so the interesting thing is, is that the district, as I mentioned, already has a, a annual payment outstanding. And it, the last fiscal year, the payment was about $1.25 million. Okay? So if we're going to go up to the max that's allowed, that $1.43 million, depending on how the district's equalized assessed value changes or its EAV changes, because that influences what the tax rate does, right? The more growth you have in your EAV, the lower your tax rate of your district. But being really conservative, it may increase that tax rate of the district by three cents. So it's pretty small relative to the rest of your rate. We're not adding much to the annual payment that's in place right now.
And didn't we talk about potentially not even needing the entire $6 million?
I recall that that was part of the initial conversation we had a couple of months ago. We are proceeding down the path at this point that you're selling $6 million. If, if you, as a board, tell me we don't want to sell all $6 million, then that's definitely something we need to talk about by the next board meeting, because we are going down that path.
So I have, perhaps it's part of the conversation too, is working cash fund bonds are for capital projects. So, and we've heard from you so graciously in May and June, and thank you, thank you, thank you. But so obviously, thank you to Eric's report. This is not operational. This is for things that we need to do. For example, our down payment for the Arrow project, our portion of that, which has come through in September. And so this will be, this is working towards the end of August. We also just brought on a new architectural firm, Leggett, in June. I think we said yes to them. We adopted them. I looked and was like, oh, we adopted them. Oh, we adopted our new architectural. But what they'll be doing is the life study, life safety study, review, whatever. So they're going to come back with a list of capital projects that we might need to do on all five school buildings. Or, you know, facilities in general. We actually have six or seven buildings, including this one. Making sure that the HVAC is up to code and all five, you know, up to stuff and all five buildings, that kind of thing. So separating those two, this is for specifically capital projects and our first, our first payment for Arrow. And Arrow is, this is independent of other financing and things like that. This is something that we're obligated to do. And so this was how we chose to move forward so we could meet all of those demands without impacting our now healthy bottom line, which is really great. Thank you. But I just want to explain a little bit more too. So I know I sent you those links yesterday for the, the board, you know, the board book from last meetings. But hopefully that will help to flesh out that story as to what brought us to this moment this evening. So does that make sense? Okay. Okay. Did I explain that well? I don't think I put bond in at one.
And this is a reminder, so the remaining step for the board is adoption of the parameters resolution last month. So it will be drafted to reflect up to $6 million and have other important parameters in there. But that will be your final action as a board.
And that's on our market agenda. So is there more to be said before we move on to the, the public hearing? So next on our agenda is to open the floor and conduct the public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to sell $6 million working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district. So, so open. And are there any other comments from the board or questions? And Sonia, tell me I'm wrong or right. There were no public comments concerning this, this portion, the public hearing regarding the bond. Okay, very good. Okay, so no other written oral testimony on the bond sale? So if we could then please have a motion to close the floor of the public hearing. I need a first for that, please. Thank you. So Michael and then a second. All right. And so we have now closed the floor for the public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to sell $6 million working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the work, cash fund of the district.
So we have to do a roll call.
We do have to do a roll call. Thank you very much. Keep us on the straight and narrow.
That's all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Michael Allmiller. Close the floor and Claudia Parker. Kimberly Leonard. Yes. Judy Raison.
Yes.
Rachel America.
Yes.
Denise Jones.
Yes.
Colleen Klimzak.
Yes.
Motion to close the floor for the public hearing has been passed.
Hey, so I have a few things to say before we move on to, well, as part of the public comments portion. And I have to admit that I did not have a chance to ask Ms. Grazovich or Ms. Rivera, would you like to speak now or at the end of our read, our read public comments? No pressure. I put you two on the spot. I meant to talk to you before the meeting. I apologize. Okay, great. I, I should have asked. I'm really sorry. I was kind of busy beforehand, so please, if you would be, you have your own portion of public comments and then we'll read the ones that have been submitted by the public as well. So if you, if you don't mind, thank you very much.
So I have to welcome these lovely people.
I know.
I had the pleasure of meeting with both of them yesterday. And I'm telling you, they are wonderful individuals. And Ali's ready for the foundation offered to start a Twitter account, which is going to be.
It's on now.
Not offered, completed.
So that will be shared with everyone soon.
That's awesome.
So thank you so much for the opportunity yesterday and I look forward to working with both of you.
Were you at Tavern in the Green last night? I saw you. You are just calling her off. She was having food, not beverage.
You're just having food and enjoying your summer vacation.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Ali Grazovich and this is Maritza Rivera. And we are the co-presidents of the union for the 2021-2022 school year. To begin, we'd like to thank the board and the administration for graciously allowing us the opportunity to speak on behalf of our membership. As the newly elected presidents, we are eager to get to work and continue positive relationships as we begin another school year amidst the COVID-19 pandemic. We would especially like to express our gratitude to Dr. Woodland, who has been nothing but kind and collaborative as we have worked together since her very first day in our district. As a former Northwest student, it is such a privilege to be teaching in District 124 and taking on this new role of union co-president with my favorite former teacher. After student teaching at Southwest, I spent three years teaching fifth grade at Northwest and am currently teaching fourth grade at Southwest. I will begin my sixth year teaching in this, in District 124 this fall.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maritza Rivera. And 22 years ago, I began my teaching career right here at EP, District 124. And it's been a great privilege and an honor to work with such a great community, number one, alongside many wonderful teachers and staff who are also former students. And also to see a lot of you guys here, who I have had your children in my house. I've switched between all of the buildings. I have been in various positions, mostly music, but also cross-caterable special education. And while that has changed, one thing that has remained the same, and I know Ali agrees with me, is that District 124, all of the students, the staff, the community, the administration, the school board, they remain resilient and last year taught us that. And that was one wonderful, it's what proved to me that I chose the right district. While last year was challenging, we know that this year will present its own set of challenges, such as adapting to the new CDC guidelines, IDPH, working hard to get students back on track, et cetera. But we know that if anyone can rise to the challenge, we know that Evergreen Park School District 124 can. Once again, we just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. We're grateful that you gave us this opportunity and we work, we look forward to working collaboratively with everyone here to make next year a great, an even greater year. So thank you very much.
I'm so excited about that.
You should write our content. That was awesome.
So well-spoken. I'm so proud.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So thank you for leading us off in our public comments. I appreciate that. And not minding that I totally put you on the spot, so thank you for that. I do have a, something I want to say before we read our public comments. So before we read the submitted public comments, I want to thank each and every stakeholder who has committed, communicated with the board recently via email and submitted public comments for us to read this evening. I know that sharing your words publicly at a meeting may be stepping out of comfort zones for some of you. And I truly commend you for your passion and dedication to your students' education. I'm often reminded, isn't it interesting that being a parent often challenges us to be better people? So we encourage and welcome stakeholders' involvement and input and I appreciate that you've taken the time to communicate with us and I hope that you all will continue to do so. In addition, jumping ahead, please know that when the 21-22 school year is underway, you can expect an email from me sharing even more ways to serve and get involved in your child's education and the life of the district. So again, thank you for that. And now a few reminders specifically about the logistics for public comment portion of every meeting, including this evening's meeting. So to respect all of our stakeholders, our commenters, our board, our public, we adhere very closely to the three-minute limit for public comments and that's for everyone. We will set a timer and we expect everyone to respect their three minutes. And again, that's this evening and going forward. We're very, very strict about that for everyone's, to respect everyone's time. And again, in the interest of time and clarity, just to explain, we do not respond to public comments at board meetings, but we do hear them. We respect, we listen to, and we take into account all, all of the community members' concerns. So again, thank you for the people who have taken time to reach out to us. We do, we do listen and we are listening and we will continue to listen. In addition, just logistically speaking, a first and last name are required fields when submitting a public comment. So we cannot read anonymously submitted public comments. Obviously, when we are able to return fully to in-person meetings, anonymity won't be possible because we'll be here together. But it is an issue today and we have to maintain that. And again, in respect to the process, all names, like I said, anything submitted has to have a first and last name. Okay? So we will be taking turns. I believe there were 12 comments submitted and six of us will take two comments each. We will read through them. They were in the order that they were submitted. So no other rhyme or reason other than that. And I'll let Ms. Marquand start. Thank you.
Okay. This is from Elizabeth Naris Garcia. While aware of the new guidelines presented, I'd also appreciate information on what, if anything, is going to be done about the amount of time students are on their Chromebooks. Between the mask-wearing and electronic use, my son suffered from headaches and migraines multiple times a week, along with nose irritation and being unable to take deep breaths. Everyone appreciates the cautiousness surrounding COVID, but the health and well-being of our children in all respects must also be accounted for. My next one is Allison Prendergast. Thank you to all in District 124 who kept our children safe and in school last year. We personally chose remote for the first half of last year and because of the extra precautions and mitigations we witnessed in place, we ended up finishing with in-person. For this year, we'd like to see a lot of the same as last. We feel as though the masking helped keep our students in-person learning and much consistency. We support the district to move forward with masking as guidance by the Illinois Department of Public Health, especially since our students under 12 can't be vaccinated as of yet. One thing I would like to ask is there, is there, will there be sufficient mask breaks throughout the day in keeping with flow of classroom studies? We noticed some days there were more than others. We've learned a lot from this pandemic and I'm sure teachers can be creative and find a way to utilize the beautiful weather, mask breaks while having kids engage, reading, et cetera. Thanks again.
We're going to jump to me. This is a message from Tracy Wolniakowski. Good evening. Let me begin by saying thank you to the board, principals, teachers, and building staff for all that you do for the children in this community. Everyone's hard work and dedication to the education of our children does not go unnoticed. My main concern for next year is mask requirements and parents' right to choose. If the students are required to wear masks to help prevent the spread of COVID, will the district be providing each child with a newly, new properly fitted N95 mask every day? Scientifically speaking, this is the only mask that can protect the children and the staff. According to Dr. Anthony Fauci, the typical mask you buy in the drugstore is not really effective in keeping out the virus, which is small enough to pass through the material. If the children will not be required to wear the proper personal protective equipment, anything else is just for show. Masking for six to 10 hours, five days a week is unsanitary, harmful for child's immune systems, psychologically damaging and emotionally traumatic. To continue to force children into these situations because of adults' fear is just unethical and morally wrong. Please allow for the parents to choose whether their child wears a mask and allow teachers and building staff to choose as well. I personally have a child who will be attending one of your schools to receive speech services, yet she refuses to speak when wearing a mask. Having her face covered while in a learning environment will inhibit her speech development and I believe the establishment of trust in her teachers. Covering children's faces also hinders relationship development and communication among their peers and their teachers. A study from the Journal of the AMA recently came to the conclusion that children should not be forced to wear masks due to three to four times the unsafe levels of carbon dioxide being inhaled. The highest levels of carbon dioxide were found among the young students. If you do require face masks, will you be liable for the negative effects, which include and are not limited to headaches, skin breakdown, impaired cognition, and acne? Putting the negative physical effects aside, the mental effects are what scare me as a parent the most. I had a six-year-old ask me last weekend if I got my shot, a six-year-old. I had a six-year-old ask me last weekend if I'd gotten my shot, a six-year-old. Why are we putting the pressure on our children to keep the family safe despite the fact that children have found not to be the main vectors of the spread of COVID, and they have been largely unaffected by the virus? This virus is not a threat to children. And I know parents will say they can bring it home and it can be a threat to an adult in my family. Think about that. How have parents become so willingly to put their own well-being over their children? The answer is fear. I personally will not allow fear to direct my life or expose my children to the same fear. If you're a parent and are hearing this letter, please ask your children if they like wearing a mask every day. Ask them how they feel about the pressure that is put on them to, oh, keep everyone safe. This cannot continue. Please do the right thing. Advocate for the children. Allow parents to choose. Thank you for your time. The next comment is from Lauren East Edwards, and she says, uh, I don't think the kids should have to wear masks for school year 2021, 2022.
The next comment is from Amea Halman, and she wrote, no masks. The next comment submitted was from Glanetta Halman, and she wrote, hello, I think kids should not have to wear masks because, for one, it's very uncomfortable. Second, the children can't function right. And third, a lot have to bring it down to catch a breath. I also feel if you're not having COVID-19 in your school, the kids should be free of wearing them. My children stayed home from school when COVID started due to them having to wear masks. I don't want my children home this new school year of 2021, 2022. They don't stay focused at home and they won't focus at school with their masks on. Please, no mask-wearing. No mask-wearing.
The next comment is from Amelia Hallman. Stop kids from wearing masks. The next comment is from Gloria Hallman, and it says, I think the mask should be out unless you're having an issue with COVID and someone has it.
Dear Board members, I am writing you to express my feeling on our school reopening plan regarding masks. Our children haven't been forced to wear masks in public places since June 11, 21. Studies show that children aren't seriously affected from COVID. Our survival rate is ninety-nine point nine percent. Our district was one of the only districts in the area to offer a regular school schedule last year. We were successful in that plan, and this year should be no different. I understand masks are a debatable topic, many different options, opinions, and viewpoints. I urge you to let parents decide what's best for our children. Masks are not only uncomfortable, they are a breeding ground for bacteria, causes mental and emotional distress for your children. Parents need to be the ones who decide what's best for our children, not the school board. Thanks. And Stephanie Olson. I want to first say thank you to everyone in District 124 that worked so hard to keep both our children and our staff safe during 2021 school year. We were one of the first districts that was able to support in-person learning because of you. I ask the board to continue to support these efforts by following recommendations from the AACP, CDC, and state guidelines for our elementary schools when it comes to mitigation strategies. There are so many unknowns still regarding COVID and how new variants affect children. They are now our most vulnerable that we need to protect. Many are saying that it should be a choice to have their children wear a mask. While I can empathize with this statement, I do not believe the data currently supports this. My son has an immune deficiency and cannot be vaccinated at this time. He does not have a choice. Some have said, just have him wear a mask. Problem solved. It's not that simple. We have been instructed by medical professionals that it is most important that those around him are vaccinated or masked, both for his safety and theirs, as it has been shown that masks work best when worn by all unvaccinated parties, not some. My son also has multiple learning disabilities and learns best in-person, so I understand the concerns about a mask impeding learning. However, I can say from firsthand experience that what impedes learning more is missed days for illness. A mask is one small way to help keep COVID and all respiratory illnesses at bay to make in-person learning as safe and successful as possible. I know my son is not alone, and my concern is not just for him, but for all vulnerable students, including seemingly healthy, unvaccinated kids. I implore the board to think of the big picture, follow the guidance, and then reevaluate after their, after the first semester or the data is updated. Thank you for your time.
Maryam Vazirkhan. I am the mother of a fifth grader and an incoming kindergarten, K124. I want to say that I have been pleased with the way the district has been handling the COVID situation in terms of safety. I know that vaccination rates are going up in Illinois and that case rates appear steady. Despite these positive numbers, I strongly feel that we should continue with the current safety protocols. Most of the students in the district are too young to be vaccinated. Even in the middle school, there is a mixed population, and therefore all students should wear a mask even if they are vaccinated. In addition to the mixed population in terms of vaccination, the Delta variant of COVID adds a lack of uncertainty in terms of efficacy of the vaccines. Therefore, it is vital that masks be mandatory inside the school building for all students and staff. Laura Kay. I greatly appreciate the efforts that District 124 and the Board of Education put forth during the 2020, 2021 school year. And through all the challenges, we came out successful because we prioritized the safety of each student and staff member. As a mother of two young students who are not yet eligible to receive COVID-19, the COVID-19 vaccine, I will continue to do my part as a parent and make the safest choices for my family as well as others around us. I am in full support of the current guidance provided by the ISPE, the IDPH, and CDC, which states that masks should continue to be worn indoors by non-vaccinated individuals. This allows all students to safely benefit from in-person learning. Allowing non-vaccinated individuals to show the choice of not wearing masks, not wearing a mask will increase the risk of spreading COVID-19 to vulnerable students and staff who would then in turn may spread the illness to close contacts outside the school setting. This past year has highlighted how resilient and adaptable our children are, and I could be proud, I cannot be proud of the students in District 124. It seems that any trauma and pushback is coming only from adults and very people that should be protecting the children. I am fully aware that there is a group of parents who are completely against their children wearing masks, and their gender is fueled by misinformation and blinded by selfish thinking. In fact, there was a parent on social media who wrote, and I quote, "I would just choose not to protect my child." For as many parents that are against wearing masks, there are just as many parents, if not more, that would do whatever it takes to protect their family and continue to follow safety guidelines. We have the right to stay healthy and the freedom to make the choice, the freedom to make the right choice of continue to wear masks. As I mentioned, the students and their health and safety should continue to be our top priority. And scientific data has shown that wearing masks offers protection against the illness and illness and has proven to be unpredictable and potentially dangerous to everyone. I am in support of revisiting the policy once each student become eligible for the vaccine, and everyone has been offered the choice to protect themselves. Thank you for your time, and I know you will offer what is fair for every single person in the district.
And again, thank you all to submitted their, uh, who submitted their comments to us. Wasn't my first reading of all of them, uh, out loud. I, I, I read them as they come in, and, um, we certainly will continue to be looking at all, all of the facets of this very important conversation as we move forward. So, uh, again, thank you all, and thank you to my board for reading willfully, willingly. I appreciate that. So. I know it's, it's a lot. It's, we feel these, when we're reading the words, we feel what the writer has to say. Um, and I, I think I, what I come away with most is that there's no easy answer. There's no one wrong or right answer, and we just have to keep communicating and considering all the different, uh, aspects of the conversation. So, so thank you again. Okay. On to item number nine, our board reports. Judy, you had a meeting this week.
I did, I did. So we met on Monday, and, um, it was a busy agenda. Again, there's a lot going on at Arrow, but, um, lots of, lots of positive news this time. So, and, um, so the, the first thing that occurred at the meeting was we had another presentation by the architectural firm, Leket, and they kind of reviewed for us some of the features of the building, and, um, they were very pleased to show us some new features like a 360 view of each classroom and some final decisions they'd made about a walking path around the building. They shared some color photos with us of what they anticipate the, um, exterior of the building looking like. So really exciting plans are underway, and they feel very positive about it. They shared that the design development phase is complete, so that first phase for this project is done. And they were pleased to announce that the cost estimates at the beginning of the project are very, very close to what, um, what the estimates are now. So they're, they're feeling pretty confident that they're right within budget. As I reported last month, the bid releases were going out, and, um, that was approved, um, despite some votes against it. And, um, this week, Dr. Canell was going to be meeting with, um, some of the people who were proposing bids for specifically concrete, steel, and precast panels. Um, and then there will be a second bid release in September. But, um, at one, one concern that came up is the opportunity for people to discuss the bids with their boards before they were voted on at governing board meetings. So we will likely have some, um, special meetings for the Arrow governing board starting August 2nd. And, um, I assume there will be several others. So it's busy time for Arrow. So, so, um, with, with those bids in mind, they, um, they're very optimistic that construction may start early. They said they're potentially going to accelerate the process. But then, um, Dr. Canell was pretty gracious about addressing what he, um, characterized as the elephant in the room, the funding. So, um, and he, you know, he acknowledges that that's on everyone's mind. The plans look beautiful, of course, but he knows that funding is on everyone's mind. So like Dr. Um, Willen shared with us, he, um, he sent out an email that he is feeling more positive than he has before, really increased level of confidence. That's mainly because, um, he had a conversation with a retired senator. He had a conversation with an lobbyist. And then he also, um, there was the publication of that editorial that, um, that was in the Chicago Tribune. And those, um, conversations have sort of set some wheels in motion, and, um, Dr. Canell last week received a phone call from Senator Cunningham that indicated that a number of projects were, um, that were signed off on, and, um, he, he believes that the Arrow project is going to get a green light from the governor. It's not official yet, but they are more confident than ever before. Is that a fair characterization of it?
They are more confident than ever before. Yes.
Okay. I think, I, I think I wrote that down in quotes, but, um, but he, he did really go through like the communications that have occurred and that they're pretty official, like, you know, so it's not, um, it's not really a word-of-mouth sort of thing. It's just not a press release yet. So that was, um, and then they sent out, he had had some, um, petitions and other kind of campaigns to get the word out, to sort of apply some pressure to local government to, um, you know, make sure that the project got funded. So now, keep, they're encouraging school districts, member districts to ease off because they, um, they believe that it will be approved. So that was a big part of the conversation. Then just as far as, um, the rest of the meeting, there were a number of action items that included approving payment of bills, recommendations for various appointments, personnel recommendations. So, you know, sort of, you know, just the regular business for this time of year. They discussed again, um, personnel challenges that they're facing, particularly for instructional assistance. And, um, I think to date they have almost fifty openings, so that's, that is a pretty significant challenge for them. He asked Dr. Lesniak to do a study of like the salaries for the other cooperative districts in the area and like the member districts. And, um, they, they said that they, they found that that showed that they were pretty competitive. But when you look at the study, I think they're very, very competitive with the other cooperative districts, but the member districts do, do pay a bit more. And the demands of the Arrow program are greater in some respects. So, um, that's a challenge that they're continuing to try to think creatively on, and, um, they're considering offering some incentives. There was a lengthy discussion of policy updates and which policy they declined because of, um, their desire to customize some of their board policies, um, due to the nature of being a co-op. That pretty much covers the majority of, um, but I think there will be more, um, even though we, I know, even though we need every, even though we need every other month. I suspect I'll have an update for each month because there's going to be quite a few special meetings.
Busy time of year.
Yep. Yes.
You know, we forget that you guys are also relatively new. And Arrow, my gosh, that has been quite the trip for you already. So thank you for all of your time and
Sure. My pleasure.
Dedication to that.
You're like, great. I jumped.
I mean, it's interesting, and it's so exciting. Cause I mean, what an amazing facility that students are going to have. It's, uh, if this, assuming all goes well, it's going to be fantastic for the group of students to attend.
Oh, good question. There was, yeah, so there, I think they are looking to open the doors, um, I think, like 2023, 2024, like fall of 2023. Yeah. I mean, they want to break ground like late fall this year, so that's a hope.
Other Arrow, other Arrow verse. You used to say that, but please cut in if you, if there's anything.
No, I didn't even remember the date. I was gonna help you with the date, but she even remembered the date. 2023. And yes, we do have some special board meetings that are coming up, so we'll continue to report out for everyone to be informed.
Oh, thank you. Like I said, that's a lot of, um, a lot of, they, they are their own district. They have exactly this, only, you know, uh, they've got their own things going on, so that's great. Next is apparently me, which is fine. Um, joint annual conference attendance, November nineteenth to the twenty-first. I know in orientation, I rambled on because I love Triple I, I believe too. So, um, to my board, if you haven't signed up yet for conference, please consider doing so. If your work schedule possibly allows for you to go to, um, the in-person, the Friday pre-conference workshops, they are published and Sonia provided those in our public packet. So, um, I strongly recommend you review those and let Sonia know your choices as soon as possible because those fill up really, really fast. And, um, I was looking at them again today, and as always, uh, Lori Grant is one of the, some IASB is one of, talking about trust.
Yeah.
So, um, I, 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 we just met this person today. She's going to be doing our, um, our self avail for the board in August, and she's presenting. She's one of the presenters that day. But I, I was writing this down. I said, I wish I were two people because it's going to be very difficult to choose.
I obviously have a hard time.
Yeah. I was reading through them again, and there's just so much.
And good to know.
Also to add to that is that, uh, yeah, it's always a great day. If you are gonna go on Friday, strongly recommend that you check in Thursday night because checking in Friday morning, trying to get your car down there is crazy. And I didn't listen for a couple of years, and I finally joined that bandwagon and talked everyone into it.
No, I finally listened. Yeah.
I didn't listen, and I And it took her a year, and then it was like, it's much easier to go Thursday night, check in and stay down there because like literally where we typically stay is right in that building where the conference is. There's no traffic. There's, you know, there's no rushing.
There're not the hundred people trying to pull into the
I was literally the one year dropping them all off and like trying to go get the park, you know, valet park, and we're all running around. It's like, I feel like we didn't do that again.
It really is. And again, we, work, work, work happens. You have your own students to take, like, we, I, I understand that, but, um, if you can, the Friday workshops are really worth it. They're really, really great, and they do need to be signed up for soon.
I don't know, do they open housing yet? I don't know if housing's open yet. They did. So, yeah, email Sonia also if you are going to do, because housing fills up quickly, like if we want, we all have to stay at the same place.
Yeah.
So they make the whole, whoever's coming from your district stay at the same place. We usually stay at the Sheridan, right?
Yeah, and then we walk across.
Yeah, and then we just walk across. Right across the street is the hill where we go. They're both, both camps, so both camps.
So, it's very, um, I, obviously, I love it. Uh, you get to meet people from all over the state. And you just get to understand that there's, there are so many facets to every conversation and things that we're concerned about, you know, they're concerned about other things, and it's just really interesting to hear the needs of all those, all the
Great networking with other school districts, learning some of the things that work. And you come back with some ideas of like, oh, we should, yeah, I mean, yeah, the, so.
It's great. So the, the Friday, we sign up for workshops, um, specifically. They're like scheduled, you know, uh, nine to noon and, you know, twelve, one to four, whatever. And then, um, there's a keynote speaker on Friday afternoon. Um, there's a, uh, vendor in the base, like the whole basement is, um, vendors, and that's the whole weekend. And then Saturday is, you'll get your program, and you can kind of choose your track. So you can say that you want to learn about finances, or maybe, uh, negotiations are coming up, or maybe you're hiring your superintendent, or uh, maybe you're really interested in curriculum. So there's
There are so many.
You can pick and choose in that day then, whatever you're interested in. Um, and there's lots of, like, again, good, really good keynote speakers and, and things like that.
Well, the keynote speakers are usually just fabulous. We had Ruby Bridges, and she was, she, oh, fabulous. She was, was she the last year that we went?
Year before.
And then what was it? Speaker for, uh, Good Morning America, uh, lady, uh?
I don't remember that much. I don't believe you, though. That must have been before our
Yeah. He had a beer, Chicago beers.
Yeah, but I, that was the last time we were in, yeah, he was really great, too. So, so it's always, it's always, um, interested. I recommend it highly. Please plan on coming as your schedules allow and, uh, and set it up early.
And teachers get P D hours.
Oh, there you go.
Just
So, um, yeah, I always come back with fresh motivation and new ideas and new context. Yeah, it's really, really great. So, act soon, I guess is my only, uh, okay. Um, we're on to, if there's no other discussion about Triple I. Unfortunately, we are not presenting this year at Triple I. If I had hair, I'd toss it over my shoulder. So, um, you missed us, you know, you missed us in, uh, 2019, but, uh, and we were pretty awesome. We were pretty awesome. Um, so, but it, I'm sure it'll still be great. It really is. It's a, it's a, it's a
Usually people run out like five minutes before the
They stay.
The, the workshop is over and the year that they were presenting, like, nobody was leaving. People were staying and, and waiting in line. They were kicking us out of our workshop room.
It was, it was Um, okay, so on to item number 10, which is our action items. Um, there's a lot of, for me to read on, uh, con- consent agenda, item number A. Uh, so that is number one, approve monthly transaction reports for June 2021. Number two is to approve fund balance reports for June of 2021. Number three is to approve expenditure report and projected payroll report for July of 2021. Number four is to approve board minutes from the special meeting of June 14th, 2021. Number five is to approve the closed session minutes from the special meeting of June 14th, 2021. Number six is to approve board minutes from the special meeting of June 15th, 2021. Number seven is to approve the closed session minutes from the special meeting of June 15th, 2021. Number eight is to approve the board minutes from the regular meeting of June 16th, 2021. Number nine is to approve the closed session minutes from the regular meeting of June 16th, 2021. Number 10 is to approve board minutes from the special meeting of June 17th, 2021. Number 11 is to approve the closed session minutes from the special meeting of June 17th, 2021. Number 12 is to approve the board minutes from the special slash organizational meeting of June 28th, 2021. Number 13 is to approve destruction of closed session tapes from March of 2017. And number 14 is to approve the additions, transfers, and resignations as outlined on our agenda. Do I have someone to make the first motion to accept agenda item A in its affair?
I'll make the first.
And a second? And a roll call?
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
Denise Jones?
Yes.
Michael O'Miller?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Judy Basen?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Um, consent, uh, excuse me, uh, yeah, action item B is to approve the new building principal at Southeast School for the 2021, 2022 school year. Do I have a first?
Wow, I, before we do that.
We need to introduce her, but we have to vote on her first.
Say anything?
We have to
Her name, her name.
Okay, that would be fair. So Haley, uh, from here, I guess, there we go, and family, yes. He's been very patient. They've both been very patient.
Yes.
Um, so, okay, so B is to approve the new building principal at Southeast School for 2021, 2022 year school year. Haley from here, do I have a first?
Yes, me.
Do I have a second? I'll second. And a roll call, please.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Judy Basen?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
Michael O'Miller?
Yes.
Denise Jones?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
And Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
I always jump ahead because I get so excited. And so, we reviewed everything, and I said, I have to vote on her first before we can have her say some words. So please welcome, and please, um, I, I heard that you had a few things to
Yes.
Say to us, and we welcome that. So
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Board of Education and Dr. Woodland. I'm so excited to be the next principal at Southeast. Um, I was drawn to Evergreen Park, um, when I looked at your vision and to see your focus on innovative instruction and the whole child. Um, when I saw the diversity at Southeast, it really excited me, and ultimately I feel like this whole process, I've seen your sense of community. So I'm just really excited to become part of that community and get to know, um, all of you and, um, all of the teachers and students and families, especially at Southeast. So thank you.
Thank you. We have so much. We are so excited to have
Oh, yay.
It's all flute.
Yes, yes, yes.
We have swag.
You're welcome. Like I said, I, I'm straight, wait, I was like, no, you have to say yes first, so.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited.
Um, you can wear your shirt and tie.
Thank you.
Bring in your, your water from home or fill it up here. Yes, thank you so much.
All right, one, two, three.
I just wanted to briefly state that Haley really did a fantastic job in our interview process. And one of the things that really stood out to me about Haley is her ability to effectively communicate and really build relationships with families and students and all stakeholders, and including teacher voice in the decision-making process, which is absolutely what we're looking for at Southeast. Something that Haley mentioned in her interview was at a part of her journey and her career, she actually made a decision to live in poverty for one full year of her, her life. And that was really the opportunity to be able to connect with the community and work with students and really see and relate to students and the community in that way. And it just spoke volumes to me about her dedication to really investing in what a community needs to be successful. So I'm so excited to have her on our administrative team, and I welcome you here to Evergreen Park.
Thanks so much.
Yes. Denise and I were both grateful, I think, to be, uh, part of that process.
Time on that, that's great.
Thank you, Kim and Denise.
It was so great to, to meet you that day and, and feel your excitement when you walked in, and I know I speak, I, I for myself saying, I was so excited that, that that was, that you were chosen. So welcome to
Thank you so much. I was excited to hear her journey as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Looking forward to the next school year.
Yes.
And, and I'm so sorry, your poor guy probably
He's around.
Yeah. He's running laps with your husband around the building.
It's long for all of us, so, you know.
So now you can leave.
Totally understandable, so, um, thank you for sticking around.
Yes, thank you.
And, uh, we're very glad to have you.
Congratulations.
Um, awesome. So, uh, our action item is, number C is to approve our back-to-school bash board of ed donation. And to recap, that is grad tickets, not year specific, uh, up to three sets of two, I believe we said. Um, approximately a hundred dollar package from Meyer with some Yeti Go mugs. And then, uh, for all five buildings, a yearbook and booster, uh, membership and some swag. Can I sum up? Very good. So if I could have someone, please make a motion to approve our back-to-school bash donation.
I'll make the first motion.
Great. And can we have a second, please?
Kim Leonard, yes. Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Judy Basen?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
Michael O'Miller? Denise Miller Jones. O'Miller, I'm getting already confused. Denise Jones, sorry about that. And Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you. Uh, D is to approve the submission of a school-wide waiver for Central Middle School seeking ISBE approval of continued school-wide title status. May I have a first, please?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second? And may I have a roll call, please?
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
Michael O'Miller?
Yes.
Denise Jones?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Judy Basen?
Yes.
Kim Leonard, motion is passed. Yeah, sorry. Yes, sorry.
Um, and then, uh, item number E is to approve the submission of the school-wide waiver for Northwest School seeking ISBE approval of continued school-wide title status. Can I have a first, please?
First.
And a second, please?
I'll call second. Oh, it's sorry.
No, I didn't Denise Jones?
Yes.
Judy Basen?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
Michael O'Miller? Kimberly Leonard, yes. Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you. And then, uh, action item number F. Letter F, number F, uh, is to approve the selection of underwriter and place or placement agent for the sale of bonds as recommended by Ms. Tammy Schalmo of PMA Securities. Do I have a first?
I'll make the first.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And a roll call, please?
Kim Leonard, yes. Rachel?
Yes.
Michael O'Miller?
Yes.
Denise Jones?
Yes.
Judy Basen?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
And Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, so we are going to now recess to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. So I need to have a first and a second. Great. And a roll call?
Michael O'Miller? Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Kimberly Leonard, yes. Judy Basen?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
And Denise Jones?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Great, thank you. So we are moving to closed session. Uh,
How long do you expect?
An hour, excellent. Okay, uh, do people need to think around before? We will take action after.
It's just Alex.
An hour, and we will take action after. Um, and if you will not be here in an hour, thank you for being here for the ti- yeah, I, I'm getting that. Uh, for the time that you've been here. So thank you very much.
Okay.
There's one. So we are, uh, we are live. We are live. That's okay. We are coming back at nine oh three PM. Um, to our open meeting. Um, we have just three, uh, more items before we can adjourn. The first, um, item on our consent agenda. Um, I'm asking that we, uh, make a motion to not approve the extended leave request from Jillian Heinrich, the grade teacher, for the 21, 22 school year. Again, that is to not approve. Uh, may I have a first motion?
I'll make the first.
And may I have a second?
A second.
And may I have a roll call to not approve?
Uh, Kim Leonard, yes, not approve. Michael O'Miller?
Yes.
Denise Jones?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
Judith Thason?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you. Um, our 14th item on the action items is to approve the coach-sponsor job description. May I have a first motion? Denise is the first.
I was just saying, who's the first?
And a second, please?
I'll second.
And a roll call?
Denise Jones?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
Judy Basen?
Yes.
Michael O'Miller?
Yes.
Kim Leonard, yes. Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
And then finally, um, is our, uh, item to approve the lunch slash recess supervisor job description. Uh, may I have a first motion, please?
I'll make the first.
And a second? And a roll call?
Kim Leonard, yes. Michael O'Miller?
Yes.
Denise Jones?
Yes.
Judy Basen?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickwin?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Great. Thank you very much, um, for all of your diligence. I make a motion to, uh, adjourn our meeting this evening at nine oh six. All in favor?
I.
Say aye. Great. Thank you, guys.